... Planning and Zoning Commission for May 20, 2019. This meeting is going to be livestreamed. And I want to mention to everybody, please silence your cellphones at this point in time. Tonight's items are one letter of recommendation, one information report, there's a new correspondence item, and two other items for consideration, which is an update on PZ 1517 Babler Farms. And we'll go ahead and get started. So Travis, can I get a roll call of Commissioners?
Commissioner Helfry?
Here.
Commissioner Levitt?
Here.
Commissioner Cohn.
Here.
Commissioner Beatty.
Commissioner Depler.
Here.
Commissioner Simpson.
Present.
Councilmember Werther.
President.
Mayor Bowlin.
Chair Lee.
Here.
I went through tonight's agenda, so can I have an approval of the minutes of meeting from Monday, May 6?
Question.
Oh, go ahead.
The minute states that I was absent at the last meeting, but at that time, I had not been sworn in. So as a brief conversation prior to work session, if I wasn't sworn in, I wasn't qualified and therefore wasn't a member at the time.
Okay, so noted. Okay, thank you, Joe. So, roll call of attendees. Oh, you did that, okay.
We'll need a motion and a second.
Motion. Okay, Commissioner Helfry.
I'll second it.
Okay, and Councilman Werther, second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions?
Abstained.
Okay, one abstention. Department opening remarks. Mr. Vunich.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair and members of the Commission, as you can see, there is a new face at the dais. So the Department of Planning would like to take the opportunity to introduce Mr. Levitt, our new Planning and Zoning Commission member, and welcome him to the Planning and Zoning Commission. Secondly, if you turn to your left, you'll note that we've done an impromptu memorial to Ray Matten. Mr. Matten was a member of the Planning and Zoning Commission early on in his tenure of service to the city of Wildwood. As you were advised last week, Mr. Matten unexpectedly passed away, and we all have obviously different feelings, but I think overall, we're very sad. We know we've lost somebody very special to the city of Wildwood, so we just wanted to make note of that. Ms. Helfry did ask a couple of minutes ago regarding arrangements, and as far as the city is aware, Mr. Matten had requested to be cremated, that any service be private, and so there will not be any type of opportunity for us to show us our collective sympathy to the family. So, thank you.
Okay, moving on to public comments. Travis, do you have any comments?
Yes, sir. Ms. Corey?
Hello, my name is Valerie Corey. I work for Straight Up Solar, and I'm here on behalf of Mr. Doug Gray for the solar panel installation on his home. He had written a letter to the members of the Commission, and I just wanted to make sure that it was read a part of the record. So here it goes. Dear Commission Members, I have no current plans to cut the homeowner-planted trees down in front of my house as they provide energy-saving shade in the summer and give a pleasant symmetry to the house. I am, however, concerned that the trees may cause issues in the future, and I would have difficulty addressing them should they need to be removed. I believe that the amendment made to the conditional use permit on 5/6, May 6, states that the trees in the front yard must remain indefinitely or until taken out by the act of God. A further change to the text added that some trimming would be allowed, but based on statements from the city arborist, I am concerned this will not be sufficient. I met with an arborist from Omni Tree Service, recommended by the city, on May 14. He indicated that he would follow up his visit with a call to Joe. Based on our conversation, here are the stated facts. Both trees are silver maples, they have aggressive root systems, they are fast-growing, the tree on the left will possibly affect the driveway, they will need aggressive trimming in order to not interfere with the solar panels, and trimming the tops of these trees is not recommended and could result in an unsightly appearance. Do the current city regulations require that a tree be placed in the front of any solar array? Would the permit have been approved had the trees not been present in the front yard? If the answer is yes in either case, I ask the Commission to reconsider the amendment and allow the conditional use permit based on having followed the requirements set out. Thank you, Doug Gray. Otherwise, I'm just here for questions.
Thank you for your comment. Mr. Newberry?
Mr. Hudson?
David Hudson, Ward 1. I'd like to thank the Department of Planning and the Commission, the Planning and Zoning Commission, for all their efforts in PZ 1517 and protecting my health and safety. And I've presented over a number of meetings, a lot of documentation regarding the potential hazards of spraying lake water, untreated lake water in the air, and I have a few more comments. Mr. Roberts's own testing shows that the phosphorus level in the lake was 50, and the Missouri Department of Natural Resources requires that lakes that they monitor, they have a critical, critical level, where if the level is over 16, they are required to test it further for harmful algal bloom contents, including cyanobacteria. So, Mr. Roberts was over three times that level, yet no further testing was done. And so that's one reason to do the additional testing that was added to the proposal. I have some more documentation about harmful algal blooms. Mr. Roberts claimed that it doesn't affect anybody other through inhalation, and the National Institute of Health has a paper here that shows that people exposed to toxins from swimming, drinking, and from air they breathe. Scientific American Environmental Health News, are algal blooms linked to Lou Gehrig's disease? Around a lake in New Hampshire, the incidence of non-genetic ALS is about 10 to 25 times higher than the expected rate, suspected presumably because of the harmful algal blooms in the lake. A number of lakes were studied, and living within 18 miles of lakes with HABs increased the odds of ALS by 167%. They did a study of the air near the lake's surface without the water being actively agitated, and found cyanotoxins, or cyanobacteria and toxins, in the air without it being splashed around, other than by wind. I have an EPA article about health and ecological effects. How are humans exposed to cyanobacteria? They mention oral, dermal, and inhalation. My wife and I experienced sore throat, dry cough, and headache, three of the noted symptoms of HAB toxins, and they were within minutes of exposure. The Modern Medicine Network Patient Care Clinical Citations notes that outbreaks of Legionnaires' disease have been traced to the inhalation of aerosolized water. An analysis of aerosol dispersion indicated that aerosol dispersion extended at least more than three miles. So the fact that we're 130 feet away, and Mr. Roberts saying, "Oh, it can't leave his property," that is not accurate. Another issue is the stated depth of the water intake. At last reported, was eight feet deep, which is in the range of anaerobic activity, which can generate hydrogen sulfide, which is also hazardous. The rotten egg smell of H2S can be detected between .01 and 1.5 parts per million. Prolonged exposure at 2 to 5 parts per million can cause nausea, tearing of the eyes, and headaches, and loss of sleep. So the hydrogen sulfide should also be tested. Thank you. And please add these documents.
Thank you for comments.
Mr. Roberts?
Tom Roberts, 500 Lori Lane, Wildwood. I want to make a comment or two on what Mr. Hudson just talked about. So the way I understand it, he's saying that if it's within three miles, it can affect you? So in other words, it's not my lake affecting him, it's any lake in Wildwood, is what I heard. And also, and I didn't quite understand, he said also something about 18 miles of algal blooms, so anything in Chesterfield or Wildwood could affect him, so it's not my lake. So I also wanted to give you, I know we have a new Commission member, I wanted to give a brief synopsis of what has happened. We bought this property about four years ago, and from the beginning, we had constant complaints from our neighbor, Mr. Hudson. We put a driveway in, and it had a dogleg in it, and at night, our lights shone towards his house, I'm not saying on it, towards his house for maybe two seconds. He complained to the city. We put in 100 trees and bushes to block that. Next up, he complained after the house was completed that the lights on the house were too bright. Joe Vunich and an engineer came out one night at 9 o'clock, they determined it wasn't. Next complaint was the waterfall was too loud. There was four studies done, proven it wasn't, it was below the code. The next complaint was they thought they were getting sick from it. It's run very infrequently, per the Commission's request. So they complained it was a health hazard, even though just a few minutes ago, he said that they could be coming from 3 to 18 miles away. Mrs. Hudson, last time, claimed there were no permits. When we started this house, there was probably 10 different permits we took out for foundation, roofing, electrical plumbing, all the normal permits. We were never told, nor did we believe, that this waterfall needed a permit. The city never said we did, even though the city, Joe Vunich, Brian, and Frank Laughlin were out there many times for inspections. So if we would have known that, obviously, we would have applied for a permit, but the city never said there was, and we didn't believe there was. Subsequently, the house is completed, they gave us a final, final occupancy permit, we moved in. Only then did we get more complaints from the Hudson's. Reason we didn't believe there was a reason for a permit, under the Wildwood Code, Section 415.090 states that no permit is needed unless water comes from a groundwater source. This is not a groundwater source, it's rainwater. I've provided a copy of this prior to the P&amp;Z. Also wanted to clarify, at the last meeting on May 6, David Hudson admitted, he said that most lakes have pathogens, not just my lake. Then he corrected himself and said, "I'm sorry, it wasn't most lakes, he said all lakes." So my lake is no different than anyone else. So I guess my question is, is this going to be the new Wildwood requirement to test every lake for sound and smell? Just a rhetorical question. At the 13 and 22nd mark of the May 16 meeting, Diane Hudson said, "Joe Vunich discovered I was putting in a waterfall." He saw this going in all along, there was no discovery, I didn't hide anything. You can ask Joe Vunich about my cooperation with the city. Frank Laughlin was out there, Brian Gramwich were out there many times, I cooperated fully. At the 1325 mark, Diane Hudson said, "I would not let them in," completely false. At the 1330 mark, she said that I told the city there were no pumps. Now, why in the world would I say there's no pumps when I had it on the permit application, and you all saw the application, it was probably 50 pages thick with all the specifications? And how else would you get the water up there without a pump? So that is completely false. One last comment, when I was campaigning for Larry Bros this weekend, I saw a lot of lakes in Wildwood that are covered in algae. Many of these are very close to schools and houses. To the best of my knowledge, I have never heard any complaints to the city that these lakes are a health hazard to these people. I've got pictures of them, and there's playground equipment right by them, there's benches and houses. Never have I heard of any complaints about health. And as Mr. Hudson just said, these pathogens can be coming from 3 to 18 miles away. Thank you.
Thank you for comments. Mr.?
Ms. Wedwig?
Newberry? Jane?
It was about something else, and it was already...
Mr. Newberry?
Ms. Hudson?
Thank you, Commission, for hearing me. Thank you, Mr. Vunich. I will try to answer some of the things that were said. In the fall of 2016, according to Mr. Vunich, Mr. Roberts was told to stop building the lake. There was a bridge going in, he was told to stop building the waterfall. That's what we were told by Mr. Vunich. He came out, so then later in the spring, it was around April of 2017, before the pumps were put in, we noticed that there was some activity in the pump area where we thought the water was coming out. We called Mr. Vunich, he called code enforcement. They were not allowed on the property, that's what we were told by Mr. Vunich. Mr. Vunich said, that he spoke to Mr. Roberts, and he said, "No, I'm not putting in the pumps." That's what we were told. So we're telling the truth, that's what we were told. The lake is not the problem necessarily. It's the spraying of the lake, the runoff lake water, that has everything under the sun, that's, you know, everything that goes into it, whatever's in the, you know, there are pieces of the lake that are 20 feet deep. You know, may not be everywhere, but that's what his data shows, that there are spots that are 20 feet deep. That is anaerobic area, he has this geothermal unit in there. It's 8 million gallons of water, by his own estimation. It's a 3.4 acre lake, it's runoff, coming from everywhere in the fields. It's the spraying of it, as he brings it up in the 700-foot pipe, from eight feet down. At first, it was four feet down, most of his literature said it was four feet down, and I've talked to some of you about that. It's pulling from eight feet down, that's the anaerobic layer. Anything below six to eight feet is anaerobic, meaning there's no oxygen, and that's where these things start to grow. He talked about the lights, and we had shadowing in our house, and that was addressed by Mr. Vunich, and we appreciate that. You know, I don't think they understand, having a neighbor affects the person next to you, and we've tried to be very cognizant of that. The waterfall noise, even though it's in the code, the code was changed to try to not, that you can't change it at the ambient, or ambient noise level at the property line. That's what we were told was going to apply. And then, when the testing came, we were told, "Well, we kind of messed up, that was just going to be agricultural, so we can't apply it to this." But when you do, from 35 was what it was tested at, the gentleman's equipment, Mr. Brown, didn't go as low as it was. It was as low as 27. And so from 27 to 47, which is the level, that's, I think, if I'm not mistaken, a 60% increase in the noise. And you may not think that's a lot, but when you're sitting out in Wildwood and you're trying to have quiet and peace, and you have a 60% noise increase, and we can't do anything about it because it has to be a policeman or code enforcement, but it's a nuisance, and there are laws for nuisance noise. So it is a nuisance, but you know, we moved beyond that. I have gotten sick, not just once, but at least five times. The last time it happened in August of 2018, I had, I was outside, and within about 30 minutes, I started having burning sinus. I have no health issues, I don't smoke, and I don't drink, and I had no health issues. Well, I drink on occasion, but just a glass of wine. But anyway, I think I was making a reference to what he said last time. So what I'm trying to say is, I got sick, I went to the, it lasted, this time, it was the worst it'd been, I had a headache, a sore throat, burning, and lung irritation. I went to the doctor the next day, he looked at my throat, and he said, "You've been exposed to something." And I explained to him what happened, and he said, on the note, this was a toxin. So I don't know what this is, I don't know if I'm going to get exposed to one of these other things that can be in the lake, but it's pulling from eight feet down. You know, that was, that's the part, it's the anaerobic area, we don't know what's in the lake, the problem is, it's bringing it up, it's in this pipe that's 700 feet long. And Mr. Roberts says, "Is he getting picked on?" No. If anybody else in Wildwood did this, I would hope that you would look at this and say, you know, and I think Mr. Vunich, when he approved another lake, he said, "Are you going to put a waterfall in it, are you going to put a fountain in, are you going to do this?" You know, no, no one else is doing this. He took the lake water, and all we were told is that he did not have a permit for this, and he was told to stop. Then the next thing we knew, the pumps went in. We've tried to be patient, I said to Mr. Vunich, "If it didn't make us sick, and it didn't make noise, I don't care that the gentleman has a waterfall, he can have his waterfall." You know, it isn't that, it's that we have had issues with it. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments.
No further speaker cards. Mr. Chair.
Let's see, moving on to an old business item, PZ 2-19. Mr. Newberry, you going to read that?
Yes, sir. PZ 2-19, Doug Gray, 16709 West Glen Farms Drive, Wildwood, Missouri, 63011. Care of Straight Up Solar, Valerie A. Corey, 10330. Page Industrial Boulevard, St. Louis, Missouri, 63132. A request for a conditional use permit in the R1A 22,000 square foot residence district and R3 10,000 square foot residence district with the planned environment units. Street address 16709 West Glen Farms Drive, locator number 23V631055, for the installation of roof-mounted solar panels, which are to be so situated on the dwelling as to be visible from an adjoining roadway. This request is to be reviewed in accordance with Chapter 415.120, R1A 22,000 square foot residence district regulations of the City of Wildwood zoning ordinance, which establishes standards and requirements for the installation of solar panels. The requested permit is required due to the panels placement on the front-facing area of the dwelling's roof, Ward 5.
Mr. Vunich?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair and members of the Planning and Zoning Commission, in tonight's packet relative to this particular item, the Department of Planning has prepared for your consideration the draft letter of recommendation that reflects both the discussion of the Planning and Zoning Commission on this matter two weeks ago, and the revision that was requested by the membership as part of its vote. The action by the Planning and Zoning Commission did authorize the placement of solar panels on the front side of the house, visible from the adjoining street. As part of that, however, as mentioned by petitioner's representative, the Commission members requested that the two existing large trees located on either side of the house be retained unless otherwise damaged by an act of God, became diseased or dead, or in some instances, needed necessary maintenance. That requirement has been added to the draft letter of recommendation. I think it's important, however, to note at the conclusion of that meeting two weeks ago, Mr. Gray stayed and spoke with Mr. Newberry and I, and expressed concerns about the restrictiveness associated with that condition that was added as part of the Commission's action. As the discussion proceeded forward, the Department offered to have an arborist, one of the city's choice, visit with Mr. Gray, investigate the trees, and make a determination as best as possible about what they are and how they might impact the solar panels. Omni Tree Service, which provides tree services to the city of Wildwood, was contacted. The owner, Tom Reed, did visit the property and discuss the matter with Mr. Gray, the petitioner. Today, I did speak with Mr. Reed, and I think overarching is that the two trees are healthy. They are silver maples, they're not a high-value tree, but they are healthy trees. They do have a shallow root system, and they do grow fast. Does the shallow root system in proximity to the driveway present a risk? Certainly. But Mr. Reed noted that you can do root pruning if it does become an issue, and that can be done by an arborist with a high degree of success. Also, Mr. Reed did say that they will eventually impact the solar panels as they grow, and that topping the trees to protect the sunscape would not be a recommended technique of a registered or certified arborist. And so from the perspective of the Department, I think it's important to note the trees are healthy. I also think it's equally important to note that Mr. Gray has expressed reservations about the condition as added at the meeting two weeks ago. But from the perspective of the Department, any tree of a substantial nature, particularly grand trees, are required before any action is taken on them by a property owner to be reviewed by the Department of Planning, the city, and to ensure that the conditions warranting the removal actually exist. And if they do, such as mentioned, they've been hit by lightning, an act of God, they're diseased, such as ash with the Emerald Ash Bore, or in decline, or if need, maintenance in such a fashion to either address a nuisance issue or a safety hazard, then that can all occur. The Department doesn't see the condition as owners, as probably the property owner, but again, the Department is not the property owner. But we did take that extra step and have the arborist visit the property, meet with the petitioner. And again, the trees are healthy, they do grow fast, they have a shallow root system, and will eventually block some of the sun that would be projected onto the solar panels on the front of the house. However, as directed by the Planning and Zoning Commission, the letter of recommendation is the appropriate form for final action tonight, and does include the condition as requested by the membership. After a motion and second, or the chair brings the matter to the floor for a discussion, the Department will be available to answer any questions or respond to comments, and thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vunich. May I have a motion on action or a motion to discuss?
Motion to approve letter of recommendation stated, and I have a follow-up question.
Okay, I need a second. Commissioner Helfry, second. Okay, Councilman Werther?
Mr. Vunich, are we simply dealing with police, or what is intended by the words in terms of that additional condition? If Mr. Gray needs to perform maintenance in terms of trimming the tree to allow full sunlight to the solar panel, would the city allow it?
If, in the opinion of an arborist engaged by the city, would not unduly harm the trees, causing their demise or death, or in the instance, the extent. It's to say, I need to trim a few branches, but if they were to request the tree be topped or half of it removed, like Amherst, Missouri does in some instances along their power line corridors, then I guess I would say, before you do that, we need to talk to the Planning and Zoning Commission.
I appreciate the clarification, thank you. Commissioner Greg Nahan?
Yes. Excuse me. My question pertains to Councilman Werther's question also. I guess the last statement in the summary and recommendations speaks to, does not preclude reasonable and industry-accepted practices. I guess I would like that clarified a little bit, so that maybe it states in there that a city, you know, recommended arborist needs to look at them or something, because, you know, obviously, it pertains to tree, to the tree industry, but I just would like it to be a little bit more clearly stated.
Mr. Young, can the maker and the second of the motion accept that change, if not objected to by anyone on the Commission?
I believe at this point, because the maker has been made and seconded, and this is a change to that, it would require a motion and a second.
Okay, well, I will make the motion then to make that a little bit more specific.
Councilman Werther, you want to?
Okay.
So let's adjust the motion? Or we vote on this? Or we vote on this first?
Mr. Chair, if there's no further discussion on the motion, the amendment to the original motion, then we would take a vote. Could be a voice vote or a roll call. And then if successful, then we would act on the amended motion.
Let's continue the discussion. Commissioner Levitt.
I have a few questions, and I apologize if some of this is just catching me up. But you mentioned that it's a shallow root system for this type of tree. Does this shallow root system, as this tree grows, and you mentioned it's a fast-growing tree, does it have the same risk of a fall as, say, a Bradford pear?
From my conversation with Omni Tree Service, I did not receive that impression.
And then, did I sense, and I forget if it was from you or the representative from the solar company, that Omni said trimming this type of tree was not advised?
Topping the tree.
Okay.
Trimming, trimming based upon industry-accepted practices is good husbandry, so to speak, of the tree itself.
And then finally, what is the city's current definition of a grand tree? And does this tree meet that definition?
For hardwoods, principally oak and hickories, it's 24 inches. For softwoods, it's, I believe, 18 to 20 inches, such as pines, spruces, et cetera. And then flowering trees is even lesser at a diameter. These are maples. It's probably more of a hardwood than a softwood, so 24 inches. And I do not know the answer to the second part, if they are grand trees.
That seems to be key to this discussion, on whether or not they could remove them is if they are a grand tree or not.
Well, our current regulations relating to grand trees does allow their removal, but their replacement now is substantially greater than what had been in the past. In fact, if you have a grand tree that's at the minimum of 24 inches at diameter, you have, you're required to either replace it in kind or with a grouping that would equate to 24 inches. So the number of trees actually would be increased if they chose to remove a grand tree in this instance.
And so finally, would it be inappropriate then if, in fact, this tree is not the 24 inches that a grand tree would need to be, that the owner could remove it but replace it with something smaller? Or multiples?
Multiples would be my response. Given the height of the trees, it's going to be pretty close to a grand tree from what I'm seeing. Now, again, I didn't go out and measure them, so that would be just an assessment on their height, but they are fast-growing trees.
Without us knowing that, should that perhaps be part of this, that they could replace it to meet those standards?
Joe, that's a good question, but we already have that in the ordinance, correct? That's referenced here?
Yes. If these are grand trees at the time of their removal, again, acknowledge I don't know if that's the case at this time or not, then yes, the Tree Preservation and Restoration
Any more discussion? Okay, let's do a, Commissioner Helfry.
Mr. Vunich, could you please tell me what we're voting on?
The first vote would be for the amendment.
But what is that?
I have an amendment to clarify. Sorry, let me find that.
The amendment is to, before any tree trimming is authorized, to have an arborist selected by the city review the work. If there is a request to trim either of these two trees to address the coverage of the solar panels by their growth, the city would have to be notified. The city would then have an arborist verify that the maintenance is appropriate and would not do damage or kill the tree. Well, I believe Ms. Gregg-Nahy wanted to ensure that although we're talking about reasonable and industry-accepted practices, that an arborist would make that determination, not necessarily just the Department of Planning.
So what we are doing, is that precluding this homeowner from going out and just trimming his trees? He's not able to do that now? If we do all these things, he has to get permission to trim his trees?
Well, without the benefit of the homeowner advising us of the extent of trimming or maintenance, yes. If this motion were to pass, the department would ask that before you do anything with these two trees, you advise the city so an arborist could consult.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
And I would ask Commissioner Gregg-Nahy if I'm misstating the intent of her motion.
No, I don't, I don't think you are. And I, and I, and I thought that that was the intent of what was said at the last meeting, and I just want to make sure that, I, you know, that the person that's going out there to do the work is qualified and is making a correct decision, and he's not just hiring someone to come in and they end up topping the trees or, you know, something that is not recommended. Thank you.
All right, let's do a roll call vote on the amendment.
Commissioner Levitt?
No.
Commissioner Gregg-Nahy?
Yes.
Commissioner Depler?
No.
Commissioner Simpson?
No.
Commissioner, Commissioner Helfry?
No.
Councilmember Werther?
Yes.
Chair Lee?
Yes.
Motion failed.
Now we have a motion on the floor as published by the department for approval. Roll call vote.
Commissioner Gregg-Nahy?
Yes.
Commissioner Depler?
Yes.
Commissioner Simpson?
Yes.
Commissioner Helfry?
Yes.
Commissioner Levitt?
Yes.
Councilmember Werther?
Aye.
Chair Lee?
Yes.
That's approved. Members of the commission.
Okay. We have another item for consideration, PZ 4-19. Mr. Newberry.
PZ 4-19, City of Wildwood Planning and Zoning Commission, care of Department of Planning, 16860, Main Street, Wildwood, Missouri, 63040. A request to consider possible amendments to the City of Wildwood Zoning Ordinance, Chapter 415.380 miscellaneous regulations, which would address certain issues and concerns relating to hotels, motels, and similar types of uses, specifically regarding guest vehicles and the identification of them relative to their parking and/or storage in conjunctions with these activities, all wards.
Thank you, Mr. Newberry and Mr. Vunich.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair and members of the Planning and Zoning Commission, the Department of Planning has provided to you tonight its information report with recommendation regarding the matter Mr. Newberry just read into the record. As the Planning and Zoning Commission members will recall, a public hearing was held on this particular matter, and at that time, the department explained and was verified by Sergeant Windling of the St. Louis County Police Department, Wildwood Precinct, that oftentimes, when vehicles are illegally parked in the vicinity of the hotel, the officers do visit the hotel and try to determine the ownership of the vehicle so as the individual or individuals can be requested to comply to the city's parking requirements. The hotel has advised the police department that they do not keep records of the vehicle ownership of guests, and therefore, the police are left with two options, to write a summons or to tow the vehicle, neither of which have been acceptable to them and supported by the city in that regard. Therefore, tonight, the department is recommending that the miscellaneous regulations of the zoning ordinance be modified to require any hotel or motel located and operating in the city of Wildwood collect information regarding the guest or guest vehicles, and that the information would be the make, model, color, and license plate. The police department would be limited to identifying the car to the hotel employee and seeking contact information so as the guest can come relocate the car and avoid any potential for a summons or it to be towed. Secondly, the department identifies in the information report that this information is not only important for the parking component relating to the city's zoning ordinance, but also if something were to happen to a car, whether in the garage or an on-street parking space, that they would be able then to notify the owner that there had been a fender bender or a tree limb had fallen on it, or something else had happened. So it would be a service to that guest so as they don't wake up the next morning, come out and find that their car had been damaged and wonder what happened. So from the perspective of the department, as reflected in its information report, it believes that these few pieces of information will ensure compliance to the city's parking requirements as well as provide a service to the guests of the motel, and therefore is recommending the wording be added to the miscellaneous regulations as identified in the information report. Mr. Chair, after the matter is brought to the floor for discussion by you or a motion is made, the department will be available to answer any questions and respond to comments. And again, the city attorney is available if there are legal issues or technical matters the commission members would like to discuss. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vunich. May I have an action or discussion?
I'll make the motion to accept the department's information report as written.
Okay, we have a question from Commissioner Helfry? No second.
So I have two things I want to say. Number one, I think that this is a necessary thing to help the police, and an excellent example would be that kidnapping case this weekend in Fort Worth, where they were able to, they found the car because the hotel operators were able to tell them where the owner of the car, that little girl was saved. So I think that helping the police, this serves its purpose, and I think that your point about the safety of the owner's cars as well is well done. So my question to you is, when I was reading the highlighted part about how it's worded, my question was, it says, any owner, operator, agent, or employee of the hotel, okay, is required to give this information, and then you skip to the bottom, it says, failure to provide the information shall constitute a violation. So who's held accountable? Is it the employee or is it the, the, the business itself? I'm, I'm just curious about that.
Typically, we always look to the owner of property, and in this case, it would be the manager. The owners are, I believe, in Oregon, not here locally in the St. Louis region, and so the manager would be the responsible party.
Okay. Second by Commissioner Helfry. Councilman Werther.
Thank you. Mr. Vunich or Mr. Newberry, just out of curiosity, any discussions with the hotel with regard to the proposed wording and have, do they have any comment on it?
Ms. Arnett actually prepared the packet and delivered it to the commission and those impacted parties. Ms. Arnett contacted Julian Jackwin, our economic development manager, received the contact information for the representative of the hotel, and that information was provided to him.
But no comments received?
We, I did not receive an email.
I did not receive anything, and I checked with Mr. Jackwin today, and he said he hadn't heard anything from the hotel manager either.
Okay, fair enough.
Mr. Newberry, roll call vote.
Commissioner Depler?
Yes.
Commissioner Simpson?
Yes.
Commissioner Helfry?
Yes.
Commissioner Levitt?
Yes.
Commissioner Gregg-Nahy?
Yes.
Councilmember Werther?
Aye.
Chair Lee?
Yes.
Okay, moving on to other items, an update on PZ 15-17.
Mr. Chair, I think we skipped an item.
Oh, we did, didn't we? New business. One item for consideration. Go ahead, Travis.
Sure. A review and determination regarding the renewal of an existing conditional use permit in the amended C8 Planned Commercial District granted by the city council via resolution on May 13, 2002, for a telecommunications tower and related equipment shelter, PZ 16-99, Brent Spectrum LP. The commission must consider renewing this permit on an annual basis. This facility is located on the north side of Clayton Road, east of Strecker Road. Locator number 21U 120226, street address 16497, Clayton Road, Ward 2.
Mr. Vunich.
Thank you again, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair and members of the Planning and Zoning Commission, Mr. Newberry and I have prepared a report with recommendation regarding this telecommunications facility that is located in the vicinity of the Clayton and Strecker Roads intersection. As is referenced, this particular facility has been in place for the past 17 years and does appear to provide needed coverage along those two major arterial roadways located within the city of Wildwood. Key amongst the conditions that govern this particular facility is that it must be annually renewed by the Planning and Zoning Commission to ensure that it is still needed, which the department has determined is, and that if there are any maintenance or other issues associated with the site and the structure itself. In years past, the previous owner, not Crown Castle, had not done, had not done a good a job as keeping the site and facility in good maintenance. The Department of Planning, Mr. Newberry, did a site inspection and identified three items. The pesky bollards, which need to be repainted, it seems, every year, a stretched pine tree, and something new, the tower itself. Approximately a year or two ago, the Planning and Zoning Commission authorized the placement of antenna and wire on the exterior of the structure, the tower itself. The allowance was necessary because the interior of the tower was full. Many of the providers have taken the opportunity to co-locate, and there was no more room inside the structure itself. Given changes in technology, the exterior antennas were removed along with the wiring. The wiring was required to be painted to match the color of the exterior of the tower, and when they removed the wiring, they left those streaks on the structure itself. Mr. Newberry contacted the representative of Crown Castle, explained the situation. The representative and others from Crown Castle investigated, and it is their intent to paint the entirety of the tower at this time. We explained to them that may not be necessary, but they just believed it'd probably be easier and less costly and look better. So the department is recommending the renewal. The department, as part of that recommendation, is identifying that the tower will be painted in its entirety, the bollards will be painted, and Crown Castle has made the commitment to keep an eye on that one tree, and if it should die, that it would be replaced within a year's period of time. Again, the department is recommending the permit be extended. Mr. Chair, after the item is brought to the floor for discussion or a motion is made, Mr. Newberry, Mr. Young, and I are available, comments or questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vunich. Any discussion or recommendation? Commissioner Helfry.
I'm making motion to accept, and then, Joe, I just wanted to ask, I drive by that every day, and is there a different kind of tree? Because I will tell you, I think that they do a fairly good job of keeping that, you know, camouflage. Is there a different kind of tree they could do? Because there's a couple of those that look just kind of, you know, sad.
Well, we...
But I still make the motion to accept them.
Second by Commissioner Gregg-Nahy.
To Commissioner Helfry's question, we've gone back and forth in terms of... So we've gone to the spruces. They do appear to last longer, but they do seem to not last for an extended period of time. What we'll do is we'll keep an eye on it, that being the department, and if the tree or the trees should die, the evergreens, we'll ask our landscape architect if we can find a solution. Clay soils with a lot of rock, it's just a tough situation, and we struggle because we want the evergreens because of their non-seasonal nature. So we'll do it best we can.
Councilmember Werther.
Thank you. Just so commission members know, as well as the audience, as this is a telecommunications-related item, and I am employed in that particular industry, I'll be abstaining on this particular vote. And Commissioner Greg Noni.
Yeah, Mr. Vunich, first off, just, I am assuming they will paint it the right color and not like the water tower.
Yes, there is no specific color established in the existing resolution that adopted the conditional use permit. In conversations with the lady representing Crown Castle, it will be gray.
Okay, thank you. And the other thing is, I mean, I go by there often enough, but I guess I'm not exactly sure how tall we're hoping whatever gets planted there gets, but burning bushes seem to do, I mean, obviously, they lose their leaves in the winter time, but they can grow anywhere.
Yes, we have a lot of them along Route 100 that take a great deal of abuse, and they come back almost every year without exception. If Mr. Newberry would show the picture of the access area into the site, as you can see, the Architectural Review Board and the Planning and Zoning Commission many years ago required a screen, a screen wall be constructed around the entirety of the equipment shelter area. So it's kind of funny, we've screened the equipment, now we're trying to screen the screen wall. And so certainly, if at our next go-round, if the Planning and Zoning Commission was inclined, we could certainly look at different plantings, more like a burning bush that seems to thrive better in our area than some of the others.
The other question I would have in regards to that, because I did not drive by there today, and like I said, I go by there occasionally, but not that terribly often. I mean, the other trees, some of them, at least from the pictures, look to be in reasonably good health, and you kind of hate to plant some in between if the mature ones need the room to mature even more. So, you know, maybe bringing the landscaping, and I don't know if it can work or not, but bringing the landscaping out and putting some burning bushes in there that'll kind of fill the holes for a while and have a good chance of surviving, and the deer don't seem to do too much with them, and add a little variety in the color and that, you know, whatever the landscape architects say, but that's just a thought. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on, we have a recommendation motion for approval in a second, so if there's no other discussion, let's go ahead and vote on this item.
Commissioner Depler?
Yes.
Commissioner Simpson?
Yes.
Commissioner Helfrey?
Yes.
Commissioner Levitt?
Yes.
Commissioner Greg Noni?
Yes.
Councilmember Werther?
Abstain.
Chair Lee?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, now we'll move on to the update to PZ 5-17. Mr. Newberry?
Yes, sir. Update on PZ 15-17 Babler Farms LLC, care of Tom Roberts, 550 Lori Lane, Wildwood, Missouri 63005, a conditional use permit in the NU Non-Urban Residence District for a 59.9 acre tract of land that is located at the terminus of Lori Lane, locator numbers 20X630015 and 20X630024, street addresses 500 and 550 Lori Lane. Authorized conditional use, an existing large water feature, lake, and associated waterfall structure, as identified by Section 415.030 of the City of Wildwood zoning regulations. The large water feature is 3.4 acres in size, Ward 1.
Thank you, Mr. Newberry and Mr. Vunich.
Thank you again, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair and members of the Planning and Zoning Commission, as you'll recall, two weeks ago, the Department of Planning provided you a requested 90-day update on the testing matter associated with the large water feature and associated waterfall. At that time, the department did identify that it had found a consulting firm that had expressed interest in doing the water quality testing, not the air quality testing that was identified in the conditional use permit itself. The thought of the Planning and Zoning Commission, after months of grappling with the issue of air quality testing, was that if we could test the water, determine its relative condition, maybe the air quality testing would not be necessary, particularly if the test showed that the water was clean, so to speak, or if not, how it might be treated to ultimately bring it to a level that would be considered safe. The consulting firm did provide a proposal. That proposal came in at the beginning of last week, and that proposal was provided to the Planning and Zoning Commission. As soon as the Department of Planning did receive the proposal, it provided not only to the Planning and Zoning Commission, it did provide it to Mr. Roberts and the Hudson's. Mr. and Mrs. Hudson provided comments, as well as Mr. Roberts. Those comments were forwarded to the, the Hudson's comments were forwarded to the consulting firm with the request to review the additional items for testing, and if they would be reasonable to be included or not based upon their expertise. Mr. Roberts provided comments shortly thereafter. Those comments were attached to the second update letter that is being discussed tonight. The consulting firm did add the components to the testing protocol. The department also added for some quality assurance, quality control information, the location of the testing lab, and the chain of transfer or ownership, so to speak, between the testing firm to the lab and from the lab back to the testing firm, so to speak. That information is being developed at this time. The intent of the department is to proceed forward with the water testing as soon as possible. There are a couple of things that the Department of Planning still needs. First, any comments regarding the testing proposal and any items the commission would like to see as any testing protocol? So tonight, I need to know if there's anything you'd like to add. Secondly, Mr. Roberts has asked a number of questions that need to be responded to, and it is the intent of the department to respond to them. Many of them, though, do not have specific testing concerns or questions about the water quality, is more what will the results be compared to? Show me the harmful or that it is going off-site, the migration, the municipal code components, if this is going to be the standard for all lakes in Wildwood, et cetera. So again, the department intends to respond, so that's another item the department needs to complete. And then, thirdly, we still are waiting for that Q and A, QC, the testing, the chain of ownership or transfer, that information. But tonight, again, the department is seeking from the Planning and Zoning Commission any input on the revised proposal. That input would then be provided to the testing firm, the consulting firm, and would then be added as well. So in summary, three items: the Planning and Zoning Commission input, the department responding, Mr. Roberts' comment, again, already acknowledging that Mr. Hudson and Mrs. Hudson have provided the same, and then finally getting those last few components from the testing firm, the consulting firm, relative to those that were identified by the department. The department will also provide one other item before all is said and done relative to this permit process, and that's a chronology of the permitting, which has been brought up by both parties, and I think it would be beneficial so that the commission could see when the permits were applied, when the permits were issued, and when the occupancy, the final certificate of use and occupancy was submitted from St. Louis County to the city of Wildwood. But more importantly, tonight, you all have any additional items you'd like to add to the testing protocol?
Thank you, Mr. Vunich. Commissioner Helfrey.
So I don't have anything really to add, I just kind of had a question, and that was, throughout the course of all of these conversations, we've had the depth of the water intake has come into question several times, and the different levels of oxygen, the different depths of water. So my question would be, what depths, not necessarily, I guess that's not it, does it matter what depth the water samples are taken from? And if so, would they be able to take it at different depths? That's my question, but other than that, I'm fine. Thank you.
My understanding is yes. The character of the column of water that forms the lake changes as the depth increases. I have expressed that question to the consulting firm and just have asked them to do the standard industry-accepted protocols and requirements relative to the testing for the concerns the city has expressed, and said, and that is the intent of the consulting firm.
So if the water, if the intake valve is, just for the sake of this conversation, the intake valve is at eight feet below the surface of the lake, give or take, inch, couple inches, will they take the samples from that depth? Because it seems to me that if there's a different biology or different mechanism at each different levels of the lake, for them to take samples at the surface, wouldn't it, we'll just be back to where we started after the test results are done, because then the conversation will be, well, were they accurate because they weren't taken where the water goes into the intake valve? Am I making sense?
Yes. My commitment to both Mr. and Mrs. Hudson and Mr. and Mrs. Roberts is that we will do the testing in accordance with the industry-accepted practices and standards and do it correctly the first time, so as there will be hopefully no stone unturned so that it can be challenged on the basis of errors or omissions. My hope is the firm, which was one of the firms that our former chair of the Planning and Zoning Commission identified from his expertise and background with the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, engineers, understands what we want. They have also, the consulting firm, been provided background information from both parties, the petitioner, Mr. and Mrs. Roberts, and the neighbors, Mr. and Mrs. Hudson. And I've explained over the telephone the concerns that have been expressed and the balance the city is trying to strike between property rights and health and safety and welfare.
Commissioner Simpson.
Let's see here, the, oh, sorry, thank you. So according to the letter to Mr. Roberts, that the water is going to be tested at the, where it discharges into the waterfall. So that's going to be the water that is in question, whatever is going into the air, so that would speak to your question, I would think.
Actually, I'm asking the consulting firm to test the source as well as the discharge.
As well as, okay, yeah. Even better.
I just think, again, I don't know how the testing will be performed at the top of the waterfall, because it does come out in somewhat of an aerosol form, but as also water. So I'll leave that up to the experts, but I thought while they're out there and with the permission of the property owners, it'd be to everyone's benefit to test both locations.
A question.
Commissioner Simpson?
So, a question, I guess, is there any kind of adjustment on the speed at all that the water comes out, the amount of force that it comes out? That could be adjusted?
It is my understanding that the pumping system does have variable speeds, and they can be adjusted by Mr. and Mrs. Roberts. I'm going to leave the formatting to the city's consultant and Mr. and Mrs. Roberts, so as they basically, the consulting firm gets the data it needs from the site, so as we can bring this to conclusion. I'm depending a lot on the consulting firm to basically understand the parameters because I've explained the goals.
Commissioner Greg Noni?
I have the same question that Commissioner Helfrey has about this, and I understand what you're saying, Mr. Vunich, about leaving it to them, because in theory, they are the experts, but I guess, and I'm hoping that they will do it, if they're testing water from the lake, that they will test it from the level that the water's going into the pumps and the, that are pumping it up the hill, so I guess I would feel better if we could know where they're going to take this from before we say yes, go ahead and do this.
Well, certainly.
And if it's not from that level, an explanation of why it's not from that level.
I think it's as simple as telling them we want a test sample at that level.
Well, and if...
And any others that the consulting firm believe appropriate.
Oh, that's, that's fine.
And so to the Planning and Zoning Commission and to Mr. and Mrs. Roberts and Mr. and Mrs. Hudson, the department will ask for that specifically.
Commissioner Levitt?
If the issue is the depth of the intake, is it possible that Mr. Roberts could raise that intake level, so it's say at five feet instead of eight feet? Would that make a difference? I think that would be good information to know in the future. Will the testing determine the source of, if there is pollution, would it identify the source of the pollution? Meaning, could it be the pre-existing ground? Could it be something that resulted from the construction and rocks or whatever being brought in? And then finally, who's paying for this testing? And is there not a more local company than one that's 125 miles away? Because I see extensive costs for travel and mileage.
Again, I will advise the consulting firm that there is a depth to the existing intake for the pumping system. Would it be in the best interest of the city to have them also verify locations both above and below? Again, I'm depending on them to tell us what's appropriate, and if it would have an effect if the pump, if the intake location of the pipes were moved a foot up or down, or two feet up or two feet down. Again, the reason I believe that the column of water changes is because there are temperature differences as you go from the surface to the bottom of the lake itself, and temperature does affect the growth of organisms or their existence. So I will explore that to ensure that if they have a concern about, well, yes, if the property owners were to move it up four feet, it would have a significant impact, or if they would move it four feet down, et cetera. The source of pollutants, the site itself is in excess of 120 acres. The majority of the property's boundary is Babler State Park, and then large lot single-family subdivisions. Most of it is surface runoff, if not all. So whatever is picked up along the course of a storm as the... So whatever is picked up along the course of a storm, as the water runs downhill to the large water feature, and the testing is intended to take into account that source. Finally, the city intends to pay for it so that the testing is clearly independent of any party other than us as the arbitrator. We've looked for firms, and the majority of the firms were local, received the information, and didn't respond.
Is this who we used for Lake Chesterfield?
No.
No.
Again, the department has a few items that have been identified that it will add to its list that's provided to the consulting firm, and in summary, we will add those items, submit the revisions, and then thereafter, proceed forward unless there is other direction. And then finally, we will get the Q and A, QC, we will get the chain of title or ownership, so to speak, or transfer, and again, we'll take into account all the items that have been described.
Commissioner Helfrey.
I'm sorry, I just, I don't recall seeing, does it say here, once they do the testing, about how long before we have the results? Just a-
I don't know that answer to your question. I've expressed that this has been an ongoing process. We'll get them when we get them. I can't guarantee you that if I ask that they be overnighted and that we get them the next day. As Mr. Roberts has said, we'd like to get it done as soon as possible, and that's my goal, too. I'm sure it's yours, your alls as well. Again, Mr. Chair, if there's any objections to what we've proposed, I'd like to hear them now, otherwise, we're going to go full speed ahead. Thank you.
Do you want to just continue and go to the next steps on the bylaws?
Again, thank you, Mr. Chair. I've kind of covered this just briefly in our work session, but for the benefit of the public and those on livestream tonight, we've now met three times on the bylaws. We concluded reviewing the 17 items that have been identified. Tonight, we also had the opportunity to look at revisions that have been recommended by the commission. There are a couple of outstanding items that were, so to speak, homework collectively for us. The city attorney had prepared language for the bylaws regarding ethics, and then the ex parte communication. What the commission will see next is the final version with those two homework items added, and then we'll hopefully review collectively the final wording, and if there are changes, we'll make those changes. If not, the department would then ask for their adoption.
Thank you, Mr. Vunich.
Yeah, Mr. Vunich, I assume that that will be done in a work session again, and before it's brought here?
Yes, we'll have one more, because again, if there are comments or questions or discussion, probably be better to do it in a work session and bring the final draft to the regular meeting for final adoption.
Thank you.
Can I have a motion to adjourn? Councilman Werther, and seconded by Commissioner Simpson. All who are in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstain?
Thank you very much. We couldn't do anything else. We'll be right back.